I'd like to welcome everyone to the State Board of Education meeting. All board members, well, Ken is not here, I thought. Has anyone, Ken Willard is not present? I'd like to welcome Dr. Skaggs and the education students from Baker University. Thank you for being here. It's always good to see students here. Remind us what we're about and who we are and what you represent, and good luck in your futures. I'd like to start our meeting by reading our mission statement. The mission of the State Board of Education is to prepare students for lifelong success through rigorous, quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Please join me in a moment of silence as we begin our meeting. Thank you. If you please stand now and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to know that Ken Willard has joined us. Good morning, Ken. So was I. We need to approve the agenda, but before we do that, today's agenda does need to be amended. First, there's a receive item number 10 on the Innovative Districts Recommendation. That was originally scheduled for later in the afternoon at 1:30. We are making an accommodation to, for Superintendent Tregg from Blue Valley, who has a very important activity to attend this afternoon, and we're happy to do that. And it will be switched with the Commissioner's Report, which will follow at 1:30 and later today. There are two changes to the consent agenda. We're adding a bond election request from USD 463 UDL to item F. And we're adding an item L to act on acceptance of the NASB leadership stipend, which we talked about last month. Additionally, the information is in your folders for that. You'll also find the award amounts in item G, the Title II Grants. We knew the schools at that time, but did not know the amounts of money that there would be granted under Title II. And those corrections and additions have been made. And could I have a motion to amend the the agenda as noted? Dina Horst, thank you. And Carolyn Campbell, seconds, thank you. John Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pull item H. I got a question on that.
Okay. Item H on the consent agenda. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have pulled? Dina, would you accept an amendment to your motion, pulling item H? And Carolyn? Ruth, thank you. So we have the amendments as discussed to our agenda, as well as we're pulling item H for discussion later. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. I didn't get all the hands, okay, and this end. Thank you. 10-0, thank you very much. Our first item then is a report by the Coalition of Innovative Districts from Superintendent Blue Valley, USD 299, 229. Dr. Tom Tregg, the Coalition has asked Tom to come forward to present a specific item of relating to teacher licensure. Dr. Tregg?
Thank you very much, and I am attending the entire coalition. First, let me start with a thank you for adjusting your agenda. Very unfortunate situation for us. I have a funeral that I need to attend. We had a student that passed away, and the funeral's at 1 o'clock today. So did need to make this quick trip in the morning so I can be back and attend that funeral. So thank you for your flexibility. As you're well aware, the Coalition of Innovative Districts has been given, I think, a responsibility and also an opportunity to waive out of certain statutes and regulations. And as you review the initial applications of districts, a couple of things were pretty consistent. One was in terms of assessments. Districts were very interested in seeing what kind of flexibility might be available in the assessment world. The second item, I think, that was pretty consistent throughout was licensure. What kind of flexibility might there be in terms of licensure of teachers in the classroom? And so a couple of subgroups were put together. A subgroup that I was a part of was the one dealing with teacher licensure. Dina was on that subgroup. Jim was on the subgroup. Cindy Lane, Superintendent Kansas City, Kansas. So we met several different times in person, also had conference calls. Came up with a proposal that we brought back to the entire Coalition Board. The Coalition Board has endorsed that. They're very excited, quite frankly, about the possibility of this moving forward. Felt like the next step would be to bring it to you all and present it to you, hoping that you would give it your endorsement, your approval, from which I understand would come at your next scheduled meeting. And then at that point in time, we could begin the process of some additional flexibility when it comes to teacher licensure. I've got a short PowerPoint I'm going to show you. It's an overview. And then I wanted to save time for questions, because I'm sure this is the first time you're actually seeing this and would be more than willing to stand for whatever questions that you all might have. So what we're proposing is that districts that are approved as innovation districts would be able to have the authority themselves as districts to grant a specialized teaching certificate that waives present KSDE regulations. Reason for this, we feel like there are times when we need to best meet student learning needs that we need some additional flexibility that we currently do not have. In general, broad-based, what this would do is it would allow us to hire non-licensed professional employees and also licensed professional employees in areas outside of their current areas of licensure. Now, one question you're going to ask, I think, right off, and so let me just go ahead and clarify that. We do not anticipate using this authority very often. This is not something that's going to transform the teaching staffs of any of our districts. But in those unique circumstances and occasions where we feel like there is a person that absolutely is the best qualified and is going to do the very best job for our students, we want the ability to be able to hire that person and to have, quite frankly, KSDE's blessing in doing that. And so that's what we've tried to put together here in this proposal. Candidates for this specialized certificate or these specialized certificates would have to meet the following criteria. They'd have to pass our local district background check requirements, as all other teachers would. They would require approval from our Board of Educations. So our Board of Education elected officials just like you would have the opportunity to review and ask questions and be sure this was in the best interest of the districts. We would then go to the Coalition Board itself, and we would present to them what we were wanting to do, why we were wanting to do it. We would seek their approval. And then we would actually go through the Kansas State Department of Education. We've developed a set of application forms that are very similar to the current forms and the actual process for actual certification. So we're not trying to in any way eliminate KSDE from being a part of and understanding. In fact, they actually would end up administering the certificate. The certificate would have a very specific endorsement area on it. Would not be a broad base, but it would be targeted at the particular position where the person was needed. And KSDE would then recognize these certificates and these people as being licensed in their particular endorsed area. The opt-out provision here basically is that to do this, they would need to be exempt from the current licensure requirements, because they would not meet the current licensure requirements. So this would be a specialized certificate that would be given that would stand alone and beside the current requirements. In terms of administrative regulation 911214, which asks the KSDE to do criminal history background checks, fingerprinting, that would still apply. We absolutely would want them to go through that process, just like any other certified, certificated teacher might do that. Couple of other things. This certificate would only be valid in the district that requested it. If this teacher should choose to leave and go to another district, then that certificate would not be valid for them. That would be void and would only be available for the district that applied for it, even if it's another innovative district. Let's say we had hired someone and they decided to go work for Kansas City, Kansas. Kansas City, Kansas would have to go through the entire process again to get that person licensed or certified in their particular district. The process would approve a license or certificate for up to five years. That would be really a district request. The forms we've put together can request this for one year or multiple years, but the cap would be five years, because that's the cap for the current licensures. The teacher would serve at the discretion of the local Board of Education. Local Board would be responsible for determining the terms and conditions of the employment of the person. If the person were to leave the district to separate employment, then it would be up to the district to notify KSDE, and KSDE obviously would then pull that particular licensure for that particular person once they had separated from employment. That's a pretty broad, brief overview. I think the only thing I'd add at this point and the thing, I think that both Dina and Jim were real appreciative of as we talked through this process, was this really shifts burden from the state to local districts, to their locally elected officials. And it requires trust. It really requires some trust. You as a board, KSDE as an administrative team would absolutely have to trust and believe that districts were absolutely not going to put anybody in the classroom, that they were not convinced was the absolute best person to be in the classroom. I do not see this utilized on a random basis. I don't see it utilized, quite frankly, you know, very often. It's just those unique circumstances when we've got a person that we really feel like is best for the classroom, and we'd like to kind of waive the regulatory current guidelines and be able to move quickly and hire the people that we think absolutely are best for the classroom. So I stand for questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. Tregg. And I'll speak first in terms of, we've been working on this for about four months, you know, as an innovative district, and felt it was important to bring it to the board at this time, is where at that juncture. I know this is a receive item only, and we'll be working and processing it. This is probably one of the more, as I said at the meeting, one of the more challenging, if not one of the more fundamental innovations that we could possibly have. It really goes to the philosophical heart of what our role is as a state board and Department of Education, as well as what the intent was within the law when it created the Coalition of Innovative Districts. And Dina and I have been at the forefront. First meeting we had was in Dr. Tregg's office with Dr. Lane as well. And then we moved forward into the board, and it's been a core discussion element for the last several months. It is by no means perfect in its, where we are right now, because we as a district, as a department, Kansas State Department of Education will be looking at it from the standpoint of what regulations and things we'll have to be waiving, because there's probably more than what even we realize. But Dina, what would you add to that in terms of background?
Well, I think there were two things that I thought, maybe three things that I thought were important for us to ensure. And that was that the department knew who was being hired. And that way, if someone called and said, "Is such and such a license, are they actually supposed to be teaching?", they would have that knowledge. I also felt it was important that that component where it says that the district will work out the conditions, et cetera. We talked about that, and it's Dr. Trigg's intent. And he has been working with the teachers and that there's a conversation there, so it's not something that they find out about later that they have some input into. So I'm comfortable with the Innovative Districts doing this, because I see them as a think tank. And many of the things that all of us hear from, or at least I've heard from a number of my districts, difficulty in filling positions. I think this could be a way for us to determine what kinds of things work and what kinds of things do not. And so I would encourage us to look upon this with favor.
Thank you. Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Trigg, for your presentation. You have my support in this. I think it would be a surprise to my fellow board members if I said you don't have my support in this. But I would like to give you a hypothetical based on facts in evidence, as well as out of evidence, because I think this is such an important issue, we need to get it right from the get-go. I hold three endorsements for secondary education, mathematics, earth and space science, and physics. I also have a master's degree in education, and I have a certain familiarity with gifted children. My own children were labeled exceptionally gifted. I helped start a program called PEGS over on the Missouri side. I don't know if you're familiar with the consortium between Hickman Mills, Grandview, and the Center School District. Anyway, I want to give you this hypothetical, because of something you said about who would qualify and who might not be under the auspices of this. If I'm a licensed teacher, which I am, and I have several endorsements, which I do, now here comes the hypothetical part. Suppose that I demonstrated my facility with gifted, and I wanted a gifted endorsement. On what you envision, would I then be able to be considered by a local district for such an endorsement? Or because I'm already a licensed teacher, would I not fall under that?
You would be eligible to be considered for additional endorsement. I think there's a slide in there that talks about two things. Non-licensed people being able to receive a license, and then licensed people being able to become endorsed in areas outside of their current endorsements. The answer to that is yes.
John Bacon?
Thank you. I can support this too. I think, do teachers have to display their certificate currently to open for public inspection?
They do not.
I think that's, if we're going to have different licenses out there for people that are in the classroom, I think that's important for parents, just so that they understand who the licensing agency is and if there's a problem. It's just open for public review and inspection. I think that's an important part of this. You know, I'm a little bit, I don't know if I'm concerned, but I can see the reluctance, the reluctance to give up our authority to licensed teachers. But, I mean, we have nationally board-certified teachers now. There are other boards out there that give credentials to individuals that teach in the classroom, and I'm okay with that. But I think I like the idea of having it open for inspection. I'm a professional, and we have our licenses on the wall, so that clients that come into our office, they know if we're, if we have credentials and if they're current. So that would be my only suggestion. And it looks a little bit different. I mean, to where people say, "Oh, I've, they're with that other license." I don't know if that's a stigma that will attach to those teachers that aren't licensed by the state board or not, but just so people, it's obvious that there's a different licensing agency, and everybody's being open and upfront. I like that idea. But other than that, I think it's great.
Jim Porter?
As the newcomer, I'm not as familiar as some other people. By the way, I would like to point out that Dr. Trigg has risen so far in his career, because he was born in Fredonia.
That is correct. Same Argus Hospital, by the way.
I'm, by the way, a member of the board of that hospital right now. But I take no responsibility. This may be really simple, but give me an example of some, of some of these hard, give me example of what we're talking about.
Sure, I'll give you a couple. First, a teacher that is endorsed in another state, has another state certificate, and I can, this is a firsthand experience. We hired, was, we were able to hire them. They came to work for us in a high school, and they worked out with KSDE. And I wish I knew the terminology, but they received a temporary certificate of types while they went through whatever procedures they needed to get a full-time license. State of Missouri didn't require all of that of them. It was either a reciprocity agreement or whatever. That teacher left us after a year, because they didn't want to go through whatever the additional requirements were. Great teacher, great evaluations, best for our kids, whatever. But they made the choice, "Well, I'm not going to go through all of that." We would have liked to retain that teacher. I think that's a unique case where a teacher is licensed, licensed in another state, could receive licensure here, but really chooses not to either expend the dollars, the time, whatever, to go through the processes. That's one example. Another one would really be in, for Blue Valley, in our Center for Advanced Professional Studies, where we're really trying to link professions and project-based learning to our educational system. We have people there that, quite frankly, the requirements that they need to go through to receive their licensure are, in their opinions, burdensome enough that they really would prefer not to do it, and in some cases, won't do it. And yet they could very well be the top person that we need to instruct our kids. Those of you that have been on the board for a while are aware that you were put in a very awkward position a year or so ago. We had one of these people. She had been the number-two instructor, working under a licensed professional for a year. That licensed professional took another job, collegiate job. We simply wanted to move her into that position. Very best person for the job, and yet you all, by regulation, ended up having to reject her appeal to become a licensed teacher. This would have just streamlined that. It would have taken you out of the equation. It would have allowed us to have the very best person in that position. So those would be two examples.
And give me the example, give me an example of what sort of professionals we're talking about.
She was a certified athletic trainer. This was in our medical strand. And we have a training strand in there. She had worked under a certified teacher. She was doing a great job. We had worked with her professional development, felt like she was the right person to step in. And actually, through a lot of hard work, we were able to retain her. We still do have her, and now she is a licensed professional. But believe me, it was touch and go for a long time, and it was not a fun process to go through. This would have really simplified that.
Dina, I really understand that. One of the concerns that I have is that, you know, I would imagine that you have multiple applicants for positions in your district. Whereas in some of the places in rural Kansas, that's not the case. And I would hate for us to use this as a way to get around not looking.
Yeah, there again, I think that's where the trust factor comes in. I really don't think you'll see that happen, and I think the Coalition Board is going to be looking for that as well, because we, you know, Dean and Jim and Cindy and I talked about that. Let me give you another quick example, and this is from Concordia. And so I may, I may not have the specifics exactly right, so don't hold me to the, you know, to the 100% accuracy. But I believe they have a situation where they have a certified, I'm going to say physics or biology teacher, that really doesn't, they don't have enough for them to have a full schedule. Maybe they could teach five out of six. The person happens to have a tremendous woodworking background. They need a woodshop teacher for one hour a day, not certified in woodshop. But under this provision, they could hire that person full-time, let them teach the biology, the physics, whatever, and then utilize them in their woodshop as well. I mean, they're excited about that kind of flexibility. And I guarantee you, they wouldn't put a person in that position if, one, they weren't the very best person available, and two, if they weren't quality and could handle, particularly for safety concerns and all of that.
And what method? In case, in case we find out that that person is not the right person, what's the remedy?
Then it's up to the local school board to take necessary steps to remove that person and remove the license or whatever. I think it'd be a pretty simple process.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Trigg's. I actually had, well, that was one of my questions, is what Jim referred to as some examples of what it was that you were dealing with. Does the visiting scholar piece not address some of that? And maybe that's a question for Brad. I don't know which, because we do have that visiting scholar license that allows some flexibility for some kind of specialized areas that, you know, for instance, Mandarin Chinese or, you know, some of those kinds of things. So does that not address a lot of that?
We have actually used that, so I'm somewhat familiar and appreciate that flexibility. We were not able to use that designation, for example, in the example that I gave to you with the athletic trainer. I can't, I wasn't involved personally to the technical issue, so I can't tell you why, but that was not an option for us. That's why we had to come and appeal it to you. So it doesn't, doesn't hit every single case.
Okay, and then these are some kind of specific questions, and I'm thinking, for instance, if you would, you know, special education is a huge need throughout the state everywhere. And this again may be a question for Brad, I don't know, but districts then get reimbursed from the state for licensed special ed teachers. So where does this fit with that? And then I'll just tag the same thing, because we now have teachers in certain districts that have to have the highly qualified designation. So where does that fit within this particular criteria?
Let me respond and then turn it over to Brad.
Okay, thank you.
From our perspective, I think it's important that you know. One reason that we were insistent upon a proposal like this that goes through KSDE and they would actually issue the license was to clarify, hopefully, that people would be licensed and therefore would qualify for those special education endorsements and state subsidies, quite frankly. Because we knew if we did it outside of KSDE, they probably wouldn't. Now, from what I understand, they're in the process of researching this at the federal level to be sure that we don't have a federal guideline that somehow we're askance with. Hopefully, that's not the case, because our intention would be, and our belief is, that these people should be able to receive reimbursement, because they're actually performing the duties, and they are the right, the very best people to be working with those special ed kids. Another thing, I can envision, if there are younger teachers, younger is probably the wrong word, but beginning level, whatever the age might be, that might be very interested in this, and they would go ahead and achieve their regular certification, because that would give them portability and whatever. So I don't think this is that, you know, isn't instead of in every case. I think it's a bridge, you know, in certain cases for people to go on and work towards endorsement. Brad?
Look, I just want to say, what our staff is trying to do is make sure that they don't hire someone, and then a year or two later find out that they've lost some federal funding. Because I know this innovative statute, statute specifically says you have to follow IDEA in certain things. Well, what does that mean? Can you be waived from IDEA state funds? Which are tied to the requirements of federal ID. So that's just what they're trying to make sure is, there are certain things you can waive as a state, but if those requirements are also a requirement at a federal level, we don't want their ELL, Title II A. So that's what they're doing is trying to, because there's a, hundreds of different certificates, they're just trying to look through to say, we don't want two years from now, when we have a A-133 or a federal audit, that, oh, you have teachers that were reimbursed. So that's just what they're trying to look at.
Okay. Well, I appreciate them researching that and looking into that. Um, and, uh, one final question. Uh, I can see the need, and matter of fact, I think you've titled this specialized certificate, so it's kind of for specialized areas, which is really even kind of the examples that you've given. Uh, my concern would be, for instance, and we've got some elementary education folks right in here. But, uh, you know, what about the area of elementary education? I mean, and, and I didn't teach elementary education. I taught secondary, but I tell you, I have high, high levels of respect for those elementary ed teachers that, you know, know how to teach reading and know how to teach math at those beginning stages that is really, I mean, it is rocket science to teach that. Uh, so what about, you know, those areas where, you know, typically you do have quite a few applicants for those positions, and, you know, I'd hate to see for us to get into a situation, and I've worked for a couple of different districts, uh, where, uh, there's some pressure put on the superintendent or whatever to hire some local person in town that maybe doesn't have license versus some qualified candidates in some of these areas that, although they're specialized, because I believe teaching how to read and write and math is specialized, but there aren't necessarily getting at.
Sure. Um, could that happen? I have to be honest and say, yeah, I suppose it could. I don't think that it will. I think there are enough checks and balances in place. That would not happen. I think it needs to be open to the extent that we, we've written it for the example of an out-of-state certified teacher. We, we, we might have someone move into the district. Quite frankly, that is elementary teacher of the year in who knows where. And they apply for a job in our district. And once again, we hire them, then they find out what they're going to have to go through to get that full certification. They get a job offer across the state line, boom, we lose them. We, we just don't want to be in a position to do that. Would, would we be looking at trying to hire local people that are unlicensed to unseat, um, up-and-coming educators or experienced educators? Absolutely not. I mean, that's not the purpose, and that's where I think the trust comes in. Um, we'd be very, very careful, and, and I think we've got checks and balances there. If, if those situations go to the Coalition Board, first it has to pass your local board, then go to the Coalition Board. I mean, at some point, that question's going to be asked. Why in the world are you hiring an elementary teacher? And, and you better have a really well-documented rationale and reason for what it is you're requesting, um, or it's not going to be approved.
And, and I appreciate the trust factor, and I, I, I definitely agree that that's something that needs to happen, and it's, it's important. It's just, uh, um, still felt like I needed to ask a question, particularly on those elementary areas where, because typically we do have lots of applicants.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sally Cobble?
I've got a couple of concerns. I like what you verbally say to me on what, why you want these certificates. It's been a concern of mine as we move through and try to do more pathways, that maybe we haven't, we're going to run into some licensure trouble. And, and I think this is the showing of that. To me, what is written down here does not match what you are saying.
Can you be more specific?
I'll try to be. This is where I get in trouble, Tom, in trying to tell you things.
All friends here.
Okay. Um, you know, I represent an area that trying to find teachers is very, very difficult. I want them to go out and try to find the best teachers they can for every one of those positions. And I think you re, Jim, you might have referred to, um, we don't want this to become a way that they don't need to go look hard for them. But as this bubble of people start retiring, I don't want them to look at this and say, well, they're doing it in the Innovative Coalition, why can't we do it? And to me, the Innovative Coalition needs to be really innovative ways of doing things, not just getting around laws. Okay? I would like to see something in here that says more specifically that these are for unusual teaching positions, something like that. Um, I, I just don't think it, it's just not, I can't vote for this yet, because it's just not specific enough, I guess. Um, somebody could look at this and say, oh, well, gee, I'd like to do that, but not realize the purpose of it. Are these teachers going to be evaluated? There's nothing in here that says they will be used the same evaluation tool, or, you know, what is the evaluation? Are these individuals full-time staff members, or are they only part-time? And I guess somewhere in here, I would like it to word say, special, it says specialized certificate, but we don't say in here enough that it's for specialized programs.
And let, let me try to take each of those and, and.
Okay, and help me through it?
Sure. Uh, one, in terms of valuation, this would be a regularly licensed teacher through KSDE, and so they would go through the same evaluation procedures as anyone. I mean, that first sixty days, semester, first, you know, first three years, all of that. So that, I don't, I don't see that as a problem at all.
I just think it needs to be listed.
Full-time, part-time, really would be up to the district and what they were offering that position. They might only need a part-time position, so it could be part-time. Um, you know, they, they wouldn't want to expend funds for a full-time position if they only had, and, and I'm speaking of districts in Western Kansas. You know, that really, uh, might need somebody to come in and teach three hours a day, as opposed to six hours a day or whatever. So I, I, I think the Coalition, you know, intentionally wants that flexibility. In terms of the specialized certificate, we're referring to the certificate as specialized as opposed to the positions as specialized, and, and, and this is where we may ha- have a disagreement. But there again, i- and, and I would go to hard-to-fill positions that, um, are even harder to fill, the further, further west that you get a lot of times, that it may be a physics position where someone in the community is, is very, very qualified in the area of physics, that with the right supervision, with the right assistance, and all by the principle, whatever, might be able to develop into a, a very fine, you know, teacher. And they, they're only needed one hour a day, or two hours a day, or whatever. This would allow an innovative district to be innovative and to work and see if that works. As, as opposed to not offering the course or, or whatever. So it's, it real, it's broad-based intentionally, and I think the Coalition would, um, would balk at trying to narrow this down to only specific areas. Because then, quite frankly, it doesn't solve the entire problem, and we're, we're back to where we were.
Well, and, you know, I don't have trouble with some of that at all. Um, my, I really have a problem with maybe the philosophy of this whole thing. I, I've struggled with. Um, I, that's no secret to anybody. Um, it's just that if I have a, if I have a problem out in Dyton, Kansas, and they need to put that physics person in there, and they're not an innovative district, and we've said okay to you, it's pretty hard not to say okay to them, even though they're not, and they ask for a waiver. I don't want to be, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
I, I respect that. I understand what you're saying, and, and I, I go back to what Dina said in terms of this being, um, a small group that is going to incubate ideas and see if it makes sense to expand or not. This, it may not work.
How long does this idea need to be incubated before we let others try?
I think we don't know. I mean, I, I, I would think it would be multiple years. I mean, we, we need test cases to see how smoothly it goes, to see if we need to change things, to see how these teachers do, you know, end up developing, if they meet a need or not. Um, I, I'd be the first to admit, if this doesn't work, then we need to back out of it. And for, for what it's worth, I, I, you know, I, I want to be sure you, you understand that I'm representing everybody in the Coalition. Hugaton, for example, is in there. I mean, this is not Blue Valley, so, so don't think that Blue Valley has just decided this is what we want, and we forced it upon others. My uncle was superintendent in Greeley County Tribune for over twenty years. I'm very familiar with a lot of the issues.
I'm not having trouble with that. I think I'm just, I'm still on the fence on the whole idea, and I, you have answered my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have several more board members who have, uh, questions, and I would ask you that we've kind of made a condition with, uh, Dr. Trigg that he can get back for the funeral. And, um, uh, we'll start with Janet, but if you could make them quickly, we'd like to get them out here in the next five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to do it fast. Okay, uh, let me see where I want to go. Some of my questions have been answered. Kathy's on highly qualified. That was certainly important, I felt. I have some others, but I'll just ask the ones that are most important to me. I have always looked at this innovative thing. The, uh, then the reason I support it is a pilot. You guys are kind of the test pattern, the test group for everything. Uh, and I think that if it's good for you guys, it's good for the whole state, and so therefore we need to change our, whatever, uh, policies we have or whatever, you know, regulations to, if it works, let's do it for everyone. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. I saw on there that you wanted to do it for five years. I think that was on your presentation before review, renewal?
Individual, um, teacher candidate would have a five, up to a five-year license.
Okay.
That, that wasn't for the program itself. That was just for individual teachers. Um, we wouldn't give them a six-year license or a ten-year license. It'd be between one and five years.
Okay, well, that would be coming from the district rather than the state. Is that correct?
Actually, the forms that we've put together, and, and I think, um, KSD has reviewed those and feels pretty good about them. The district would be able to request a one-year or a multiple year, up to five-year, um, certificate for the teachers that they're applying for. Some districts might not want, you know, they, they, they might not want to commit to five years. You know, they, they might want a shorter certificate. It might be a one-year issue for them, and they just want it, that person have a one-year license and don't want to have to re- remove it or revoke it. So that flexibility would be district by district.
When these people are hired, or you don't, this is coming through, will it come to this board? For at least, so we will not have any knowledge of anyone doing this?
Yes, you'll have knowledge, because that, Dina and Jim talked about that as well. Um, the idea of providing you a list from the, um, Coalition of, of Innovative Districts, anyone that they've approved, so that you know, absolutely. But to require additional approval is a step that we really wanted to avoid. I mean, we're going to have board approval, we're going to have Coalition approval then to bring it here. It's just one more, quite frankly, place that it slows down the process.
I guess I'm not asking for approval. I'm asking for knowledge.
Yes.
You know, I think that's the important thing, and, uh,
Dina and Jim requested that.
And frankly, what I would, what I would suggest, I, I guess what I would like to see is I would like to see a yearly review.
Sure.
I mean, in fact, a yearly, maybe not even a review, but it'll report to this board on yearly of how this is oper, how this is functioning with each of these individuals, because, you know, I don't, I'd like to kind of, because who knows? Maybe we'll think within two years, hey, this is great, and we need to go ahead and implement it. Or we may think this is absolutely disastrous, and we want no part of it. We've received lots of complaints. So I guess that's what I would like to see, is a minimum of a yearly review. I would like it presented to us when it's happening, whenever anyone's approved, uh, and then that way we are aware of it, not necessarily for us to rubber stamp it, but for us to at least have knowledge. And then secondly, I would like, I could support it if we could do it in, uh, with a yearly review. I mean, and that's not approval. That's just a review. I'm not asking us to vote iron, and, uh, yes or no? I'm, I'm asking for us to have the opportunity to review it. At, at, at a, at a board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Bacon?
Yeah, real quick, um, I just thought I better clarify one of my comments. Um, I guess I really don't, do you feel like it's absolutely necessary that these licensures come through the state board? Or is it something that a local board or the Coalition Board could do? That's kind of where I was going.
Okay, I, what, what we feel is that it needs to go through the local board, the Coalition Board, and then KSDE, not the state board, you all per se, but, but we think the license needs to be issued by the State Department of Education.
So they can get paid, or what is the hang-up with that? Why does it have to go through this department?
Number one, it, it does allow, we hope, for special education teachers or ES, ESOL teachers, teachers that do rece, that districts do receive some kind of additional funding for them. It, it gives the stamp of approval for that to happen. If we don't go through, and, and the license is not issued by KSDE, then, then that's out the window.
I just wonder if, if, uh, if we're short, uh, making this, uh, process shorter, I just don't know if there's going to be enough scrutiny that I want to be responsible for this person. I would rather there be a separate entity that was, uh, a little more, uh, responsible, I guess.
I think we're indicating state boards, excuse me, local boards actually will be the responsible party. I mean, we're, we're, we're taking that burden really away from you because of the process, you know, because you're being waived out of that.
But if the licensure or the certificate says it went through the KSDE or the State Board of Education, that is misleading in my view, to a certain extent. So that's why I think it might be better if there was some differentiation there. That's just a, you know, something to think about.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Trigg. Well, for me, I've struggled with the innovative school district concept, period. And I'm going to shorten it so you can get out of here, so I'm just going to voice.
I'll take whatever time is necessary.
No, one of my, I'm going to voice my, one of my concerns, and that's on the form that we've been presented. And it says the multi-year. To me, that, I think it should be defined as, and we should have, instead of have the one year, but then have two-year or something like that. I, I, because multi-year, how many, that can be ten, twenty years.
I, I, I have no problem with that whatsoever, modifying that, because the, the, the Coalition of Innovative Districts feels very strongly, five should be the maximum. So we, we can absolutely modify that.
Okay, but, all right. I'm going to let it go for now. Thank you. Because I,
I mean, if, if there are other issues, I mean, I, I'd just assume to get them out now, so we kind of knew what we need to do.
Well, I think you, my other issues is about qualifications, and I think you keep telling us that it's going to be the local district, and we, we don't have any say in that. And so that's a major concern for me, uh, for, for some of our, um, schools or children getting the proper, um, teachers. So I'm still struggling with this.
To be with me today as well, because Cindy Lane from KCK, because she's very supportive of this, and, and sees some programmatic things that I really can't explain. Some, some benefits in, in terms of some teacher internship programs and some things that she can do that I think she feels like is going to build her teaching force, uh, in, in a way that it hasn't. So I, there again, I can't speak for everyone.
I know. About maybe next month, I saw, I know she was testifying yesterday, so she probably had to go back to work today, but maybe for our next meeting that Cindy can be here, because, so she can explain and help someone like me be totally supportive of this, because I'm, at this point, I'm not.
And I appreciate that. I respect that.
I'd like to thank the board members for their input. You know, the Coalition of Innovative Districts will be meeting Thursday, here in Topeka, on Thursday morning, and, and on, and your comments and suggestions and, uh, questions will be, uh, a central part of that agenda. You know, very good discussion. Thank you for your input. Uh, Dr. Triggs, thank you very much, and our condolences and prayers to the family. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'd like At this time, I'd like to declare the Citizens' Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting at 10:50 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification only. Our first speaker today is Kathryn Kirschenbach-Ostmeier, followed by Julie Doyle.
Kenny, I have copies here. Do you take those or? And you did pretty good with the name.
Pretty, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. I go by Kathy K O, K K O, so it is Kirschenbach-Ostmeier. I know many of you, and I'm glad to be here again to testify, but not so much on the topic, because once again, we're dealing with emergency safety intervention, seclusion, restraint. House Bill 2170 is coming up again tomorrow before the Senate Education Committee, so I wanted to visit today with the State Board concerning that. First of all, in testifying as a parent, a parent of a child who has Tourette's Syndrome co-occurring with a attention deficit disorder, he's now doing very well. But during his middle years, he had a lot of difficulty. I'm also a Director of Special Ed Northwest Kansas Educational Service Center, nineteen school districts out there, and President of KC, the Special Ed Administrators Organization. Let me start first by saying that what is in place with emergency safety interventions that we've worked on, now me personally involved with it for ten years, in terms of the emergency safety requirements checklist provided by the State Board and the regulations that go along with that, that enforcement piece, is, is working. It, it, it does what it needs to do. It's in place. I know in our area, we've, we've trained many, many staff, and we actually had schools that were required in a random check to document and show how they followed these two pages of requirements. So the enforcement piece is there. But as a parent, what started me down this process was the fact that my son had, as part of his disability, a rage reaction. He oftentimes became very volatile and violent, and it was scary. It was dangerous to himself and others at times. In the school that he was in, Colby Schools, they did a wonderful job of working with us in a seclusionary option. He sometimes needed that. As he got a little bit older, he started putting himself in a seclusion to calm down. And today, he's completed a diesel technology program and is working and making money and doing quite well. But during those times in the middle years, we needed those options. And it was important that we not get carried away with regulations and things that would scare, literally scare, the school and those working with him into not keeping him where he needed to be, which is his neighborhood school, going there with his peers in a general ed curriculum for most of the time. There's nothing wrong with my child's brain in that he, he's not able to complete a curriculum, but what's important is that he had some difficulties. So with that, I just wanted to share, excuse me, share that it's really important that we stick with the regulations that are in place, that you guys have worked with many groups in providing and vetted and studied, and that we need to convey that and continue that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Julie Doyle, followed by John Morton.
Good morning. I am Julie Doyle, and I'm here today to visit with you about the alternate route to licensure. I have a vested interest in this. I've been a licensed teacher in this state for my entire life. My grandfather forty-two years before me, and my ancestors before that. And Kansas was founded on the thought that we're going to put our, most our money and our resources in our most important resource, our most viable resource, our citizens, our children, our schools. And I stand here, just to let you know where I've come from, I am one of your most highly effective, highly qualified teachers in Kansas. I have bachelors and all these degrees from Kansas, I might add, bachelors and masters. I needed, I was a library, I wanted to be a library media specialist. They needed it in my district. And yet, even though I had two masters and national certification, I couldn't qualify, I couldn't teach in that. Now, we know the state has processes for if we need a teacher in an area, in these rural areas, if we need someone in that place, we can ask the state, we can, we can put them in that position. We have policies in place to give them that licensure. I would say a good teacher will go ahead and fulfill that no matter what. If that's what it takes and that's what you need, I'll do her. That's what I did. I went back and got that second master so that I could be a library media specialist in our state. And I'm a state officer in that. I'm the state, uh, President of the National Board Teachers of Kansas. But more importantly, I'm a parent, and I've been in the trenches day in and day out for over a quarter of a century. And not only in the trenches, I've not only been in the classroom, but I've worked then in my district, and then I went out to districts around me, and then went to the state. I've been working on accreditation system for years. I want the most innovative accreditation system in Kansas schools. I want Kansas schools to be the best in the world. I went to Washington, D.C. two weeks ago to talk to teachers about how can we make the, even more rigorous and make sure we have the best teachers, because what we've learned from the data in schools, that when I get a new teacher that comes in my building, and this is just from the QPA data, when I looked at test scores from Kansas scores, we found if a teacher had been in the year of their first year, their scores could be lower, would be lower, almost a hundred percent of the time than an experienced teacher. And that's with all the accreditations. That's with all the education. And so what we do, we said, okay, we've got to pair them up with a good teacher. We've got to give them some mentoring. We need some more staff development. But we've got a good, good product here, but we need to mold her or him into the best teacher we can have. As I read through what they're thinking, I applaud my colleagues, my esteemed colleagues that want to try something different, and I'm riding for that. But one thing we can't bend on, because it's my baby in that classroom. It's my grandchild in that classroom. It's my neighbor's kids in that classroom. We cannot, that's one, we can't play with that when we're looking at innovating schools. We have to have the best teachers. Regis shows it. Research shows us the best teachers to be with the lowest students, the most struggling students, is your highest qualified, your highest effective. It also says the most important indicator in a classroom is the teacher, if they're going to succeed. I'm willing to, to play with some other things as long as I have some consistent knowledge, that I know the best teachers in that classroom. And that class only gets one, one time, one year, first grade, senior year, that. They deserve the very best in Kansas, and that's what we get. Don't, don't bend on this. Use the regulations in place and look at it more closely. I beg of you and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Dr. John Morton, followed by Mike Martin?
Thank you, Mr. McNeese. I'm putting on my Emporia State hat this morning. This proposal relative to licensure has generated a great deal of concern amongst teacher educators and students in colleges of education. So I wanted, I felt like you needed to understand that there might well be unintended consequences of, of these kinds of things. I think there's a couple of things here. One suggestion I would make, it would appear to me if this goes forward, there ought to be discussion, first of all, with KSDE licensure folks, and perhaps those involved, those of us involved in teacher education and higher ed, to see if in fact, there are things in place that would allow us to get, to get to the same end. Because I think the unintended consequence is, this, this appears to demean the teacher education program in our state. And I don't think that's your intent, and I hope it's not the intent of, of the Coalition folks. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm all in favor of innovation, and, and, and believe, I don't believe this is innovation. I believe this is circumventing rules, and I don't think that qualifies as innovation. Content knowledge does not equate with competence. Our graduates from Emporia State are probably some of the best prepared teachers, teachers in, in the state, I believe. And there are lots of other qualified teachers as well. But it's more than content. It's classroom management. It's technology. It's, it's how to deal with all the myriad of things that are confronting teachers in this day. It's, it's tougher to be a teacher today than it ever has been. And I think we've got to value that, and I think we have to be very careful as, as we move ahead and not, not assume that everything will be fine when in fact there may well be unintended consequences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Martin, followed by Julie Webb?
Good morning. I'm Mike Martin. I am a member of SEAC, Special Education Advisory Council. I'm a parent of a child with a disability, and I'm a principal at Frotonak Junior High. I've been involved with the seclusion and restraint process for four-plus years, worked with SEAC in order to try to support the measures and regulations that have been put in place by the State Board of Education, and I want you to know, we appreciate that. Recommendations we've given have been heard, and I feel like we have a very good process in place. We have used, in our district and in others, the ability to de-escalate situations, to train our staffs in a way that we feel is appropriate. And it's because of the regulations that have been put in place. We have also, in my opinion, provided the protections for our staff, that they have the training, they understand what they're supposed to do, and that they can keep our students safe, as well as protect our students. Not just the ones that might be secluded or restrained, but those students that are going to school that may not be able to protect themselves in a situation. My child has Arthur's griposis. It's a condition that's physically limiting him. And in a situation where a student might become disruptive, his security and safety can be in danger. Our regulations that we have in place now work. Our staffs have been doing a very good job of de-escalating and making sure that it doesn't become a combative situation. I have been a targeted technical assistance school, which means that we had no seclusion and restraints at the last reporting, but we were one of the ten percent by the State Board to be reviewed. And I spent several hours putting together the information that was required by the State Board to prove that we're doing what we're supposed to. So there's oversight within this regulation that the State Board has provided. I ask that the State Board work with the State Senate to try to come up with either legislation that supports the regulations that are already in place, or to leave the regulations as they are and stop House Bill 2170 as it, as it is proposed. It is to our benefit in the long run to continue to support with the broad stakeholders that we've had involved in this, the program that we have in place. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have a question. Mr. Willard?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Martin, thank you for coming back.
That's okay. Could you expound at all on what, what the actual problems you have with 2170 in, as regards our regulations?
I, I know, for, for me personally, we, when we wrote these regulations or, or gave them to the State Board, they were broad-ranging. And right now, with the way 2170 is written, it's just for public institutions. I was a private school principal for six years, and the regulations or the law, the way it's set up, wouldn't be enforceable to a, a parochial school or a private school. And to me, there's loopholes within the, the 2170 that I feel like we're missing certain parts for, for kids that could be in danger. You know, I listened to the testimony whenever it came about four-plus years ago, and we needed to do something to protect our kids. And that's what the regulations SEAC has provided and the State Board has imposed have done. I think that the law that they're suggesting now is very limiting, and it doesn't do as much as the regulations that we have in place. I believe that the State Board has done commendable, commendable job in, in putting the right regulations in place, not only protecting kids from seclusion and restraint problems, but also protecting the educators and protecting the other students that are in our schools.
So your, your position is that it just, you feel like it limits our regs?
I, I really do, and I think that what we have in place is much better than the law. You know, I've, I've said it before, tw- over four years, we've been working with this, and I'm not sure that at the State Legislature, the last month is enough period of time for them to really write legislation in such a way that would be as beneficial as what we have now in the regulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes? Janet Waugh?
I just, I just, I'm sure you probably have, but have, have you all contacted the committee? I mean, you know, you're presenting, that's, at least two of you presented, so.
Yes. Yes, and I've also contacted my local legislators as well to, to help educate and advise them the best I could.
Okay. Thank you. That was important.
Any other questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Webb, followed by Terry Collins.
Good morning. My name is Julie Webb, and I'm a teacher in the Olathe School District, and I'm here today representing Kafford, the Kansas Association of Health Physical Education Recreation and Dance. When I was asked if I would speak for, for the Board of Education, I was nervous, of course, but I quickly agreed because I knew that after all the years of my strong beliefs, I finally had what I needed to speak in front of you, and that's data. Mounds and mounds and piles and piles of data to back up what I've believed all these years. Now, I taught elementary school for twenty-seven years, so I can talk loud and I can talk fast, and I can tell you data from the national level, and I could talk about John Ratey and how movement is miracle growth for the brain, and how we learn from, from Dina and brain rules, that if you simply stand up, your brain will have a better time filing away the information that you learn. I could talk about the, the state level and about how Kansas has implemented K-FIT, the Kansas Fitness Information Tracking Program, that helps us prove what is also known at the national level, that children who are better and healthier physically score better in the classroom. They attend school more consistently. Currently, there are over a hundred and fifty teachers and administrators in Emporia working together to learn more about student performance measures and teacher evaluations. Having recently completed that process myself in Olathe, I can speak to how even at the local level, students who are more healthy are better students in the classroom. But these are just numbers, and you're going to sit here, notice, remember what I said about sit, all day and hear numbers and numbers and data and numbers. So I brought my secret weapon with me, Aiden. This is Aiden. He is a preschooler in my building, and we'll save the early childhood discussion for another day, but Aiden recently celebrated his birthday. And you might think that he brought cupcakes or cookies, but he didn't. He brought bubbles. And when I talked to him about that, he said, well, I'm going to have cake at home later, but I wanted to be in your healthy birthday club, so I brought bubbles, little tiny bubbles for all his friends. Now, I could have also brought a picture of Duron. Duron is a first grader, and as he left my classroom the other day, he said to me, man, was I vigorous. This is a first grader who knows the difference between light, moderate, and physical, vigorous physical activity. He is a student who will do well in school because his health will be good. I could have brought you a picture of Sydney who could not catch to save her life. I tried everything, big balls, small balls, tiny balls, hard balls. One day, I brought a doll in and I threw it at her, and she did every single thing I taught her. She put her fingers together, she got underneath it, and she caught that baby, because I knew, my golly, she wasn't going to drop the baby. And hopefully, Sydney will be a healthy adult because she'll have the confidence she gained from her elementary P.E. class to go out and move as an adult. So as you sit here today, and you listen, and you listen to all those numbers, remember why you're all are here. It's not necessarily about Aiden, but it's about the students that we all teach. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Terry Collins, followed by Judy Morton.
I've been here before, and I learned that your three minutes don't start until you get over there with my [inaudible].
I think if you go there, it's when you open your mouth.
Open.
Shut up.
Okay. I'm very happy to be here again this month. My name is Terry Collins. I'm the Director of Donovan County Special Education Cooperative. I'm here representing the Kansas Association of Special Ed Administrators. Once again, we're going to be talking about emergency safety interventions. Now, I know this three minutes goes really fast, so I'm going to cut to the chase. You can read this document yourself. There are a lot of pertinent facts in there that I think are important for you. But I think I want to point out, first of all, that there has still, next month is two years that the regulations have been in place. There has only been one parent who accessed the conflict resolution and took the, the problem to the State Board, and that problem was resolved. There have been no other complaints at that level. Now, we do have other agencies, the Keys for Networking, we do have Families Together, who are helping us solve problems. It's not that they're problem-free, we're not. But at the local districts, we're solving problems, and we also have Families Together helping solve problems and Keys for Networking. So no problems have risen to the level even of going to the, the local board for an investigation. So there may be a few more people out there that have a complaint that hasn't been resolved that we don't know about. This time is gonna go real fast, so I want to move to the next major point that I wanted to make to you, and that is that the state of Kansas is recognized nationally for having an excellent set of regulations and programs regarding emergency safety interventions. I'm sure you've heard of the study, the nationwide study on how safe is the schoolhouse. They divide protections in the states. They know how every state is doing and what their regulations are, and they divide those into several different sections, the highest of which is the meaningful protections in law. And this page tells you what they say about Kansas. They say that Kansas has meaningful protections that protect all kids equally from restraint and seclusion, and that these statutes and regulations have the force of law. You've heard that the regulations are a toothless tiger, so to speak, but they are not. They are enforceable. Now, the next issue, I've got 30 seconds, so I want to say to you that as far as the term serious bodily damage, there is no government recommendation for that. This page shows you all the states, out of 50 states, 10 have no regulations, no statements. Thirty-seven of them chose terminology similar to Kansas, and only three of them use the term serious bodily injury. The other thing that I want to tell you is that I have been over to the legislature, I've talked to Senator Abram, and I would encourage you as a board to reach out to the Senate Ed Committee. They want to hear from you. They want to hear from KSDE. They want to know how well these regulations are working. My time is up. I did want to tell you that nationally, I've gotta tell you this, Kansas has been asked to present at the Annual Association of Positive Behavior Supports. Jana Roseborough, our own person, is gonna be the showcase presenter at that. So, important piece for him. I'll stand for any questions, or I'll sit down and be quiet.
When's the next hearing?
Tomorrow, at 1:30.
Thank you. Thank you. Judy Martin is our next presenter, followed by Marvin Miller.
I have presented a little document that just has some talking points, and I want to kind of make it brief and concise. My name's Judy Martin. I am the Director of Special Education for the Gardner Edgerton School District, and I am here representing the school district and on behalf of all children and children with disabilities. Behavior is not new in our school districts, and as you'll see in the talking points here, is that we've always had behavior. From 2005 to current, that has gone through some different modes of how we've been addressing that behavior. And actually, even before then, I started teaching in the classroom in 1982, and we've always had aspects of behavior with our children that we have worked through. Well, I'm gonna take a little different stand on this with emergency safety interventions and seclusion restraint, is that I'm gonna show you some concrete things that the school districts are doing. I think that there is an understanding or a thought out there that school districts aren't doing enough, and we are doing quite a bit. And so I wanted to show you the things that we are doing. After the regulations took effect in April 2013, we did have a board policy. And so, in August of 2013, we developed a board policy, as did every school district across the state. Sometimes I think that, when I've heard conversations, people don't understand that every district has a board policy on ESI. So this is an example of our board policy. We also have components listed on our website, and every school district is supposed to have this. And on our website, we have a posting of that board policy. We have a training of a PowerPoint, and so this is a copy of the PowerPoint that we have done. And I have trained all the schools in our district for the last two years, alongside with some of the principals. And that training isn't just for teachers of special education, it's for the food service ladies, it's for the custodians, it's for the administrators, it's for Jenna teachers and special education teachers alike. And so there's been a lot of training that has gone along with that as well. We have received resources from TASAN, we've received resources from KSDE, which you've heard previously, and there's also definitions and principles that we abide by. Currently, what's happening is that annually, like I just talked about, we have professional development. We have select staff. In our district, we have 204 staff that are trained in CPI, Crisis Prevention Intervention. That can be costly. For those 204 staff, that cost our district $5,600 to train those staff. We review data with our superintendents on a semi-annual basis, and we have technical assistance. We also, as Mr. Martin had shared, have a school that required some technical assistance. And so I appreciate the data and the information that is shared with that. When ESI occurs, parents are contacted. So we have a letter that we send to the parents. Our teachers do a phenomenal job. They keep the data, they let the parents know, either text or email, and then the letter is sent out. And then after the incident unfortunately has occurred, then that team gets together and they debrief. So I would ask that, I'm supporter of the regulations that you guys, as a state board, have set forth, and I would ask that you continue to set forth, continue the regulations, and so we can continue to enhance our progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joan Robbins. Oh, Joan, it's not you, it's Marvin Miller, I'm sorry. I was just... Marvin, I apologize.
That's okay. Good morning. My name is Marvin Miller. I'm a parent member of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I live in District 10. As a father of a daughter born with significant intellectual disabilities, I have advocated for disability rights at the local and national level for nearly 13 years now. My perspective is unique. I have served as a Christian school, private school administrator in both California and Kansas, including a KSDE accredited school in Wichita. After many years of doing that, I now pastor a congregation in Wellington and have talked with parents there. While I pastor, I also continue to substitute teach special education in the elementary systems. Because of these unique perspectives, I get to see the ground up. I don't see the great stuff that the administrators are doing because I'm a parent and I'm working inside the classrooms. During the last many years, this council has met a number of times looking at ESI and trying to protect all the students, and has had a great collaborative approach with all the stakeholders. After extensive testimony, you, the state board, has adopted CAC recommendations to limit restraint and seclusion. As a parent and as a new member of CAC, I became extremely troubled by the reports of abuses of seclusion. As a new council member, I challenged the depth of the current regulations, read other state statutes, looked at national trends, and this is what I discovered. I realized that our ESI regulations, as well as the proposed ones that you have already passed, are some of the most comprehensive, thoughtful, collaborative, and detailed in the country, and is now becoming a model for other states. My interactions with fellow students, parents, parent educators, and teachers in the schools confirm this. Everyone wants schools to be safe. Everyone is working hard to implement the current regulations. I can see that on a daily basis as a substitute in a special ed classroom. My own daughter is excelling in a room that no longer has a seclusion area. KSDE and TASAN has done a great job of training educators with positive behavior supports. In short, I believe that the current ESI regulations are working. So finally, I would like to go ahead and encourage you to maintain the good work, maintain the regulations that we have in place, because I think it's beneficial for all. Thank you.
Marvin, again, my apologies, especially since you're from District 10. Hard to see you back there. I know you find it hard to believe, but... Okay, Joan Robbins, now it's your turn. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Robbins. I'm the Director of Special Education for Blue Valley School District, and I'm the Chair of CAC this year. It might seem a little bit like we're preaching to the choir after all, these are your regulations that, you know, hard fought and that you wrote that we're encouraging you to continue to support. But, Mr. Willard, you asked about, thank you, sorry, I think last time maybe you sat on the other side. Well, I heard your question about why, specifically why we oppose the House bill, and I think that it would be very easy for senators and legislators to say, "This is kind of a no-brainer. Why wouldn't we support a bill that protects children?" But, the bill is problematic, and I'm gonna outline five main ways. First of all, the inclusion of the word "serious" as far as bodily injury, that raises our standard to a much higher level of being able to intervene. For example, if a student is attacking another student or staff member and biting them, biting them through their clothes, biting through a leather boot, drawing blood, that would not be considered serious bodily injury under what is outlined in our process handbook, which says, "Serious physical injury is where there's a substantial risk of death, extreme physical pain, protracted and obvious disfigurement, protracted loss or impairment of the function of a bodily member or organ." I mean, can you imagine our staff members being asked to step back and say, "I don't know, I'm not sure this is gonna be serious bodily injury," as a staff member or student is screaming in pain? We routinely sit across the table from parents whose children have been injured at the hands of another student, and it may be related to their disability, but they want us to keep their children safe. Our staff members ask us, "Why does this, this isn't serious bodily injury? The child broke a nose." It doesn't rise to that standard. So the inclusion of the word "serious" is very problematic. We have fought so hard to get the language in the regulations to exempt police officers from the ESI restrictions. That is missing from the proposed legislation. We need to have that included. The publication of ESI data by school, typically there is one, maybe two students who are, you know, receiving the emergency safety interventions. Publishing this information will absolutely compromise student confidentiality. That's very problematic to me. There is a provision for a medical doctor to write a note excusing the student from being secluded. Doctors, while they have their patients' best benefit at heart, they don't always have all of the information that they need to be making these determinations. They have one side of the story and may not understand what accommodations the school is already, okay, thank you, my time is up, what the school is already doing, and the fact that we can only do this in an emergency situation. So those are five, real quick.
Jim Porter has a question.
The only question, and this is to everyone who's presented on this subject, are any or all of you going to be testifying before the senate?
Yes, I think the majority of us do, for sure. We have been in touch with the state senators, but I just think that they need to hear from everybody. And, you know, it's, you know, just in talking with them, I think that the lack of information is kind of astounding as far as the reach of the current regulations. I think that was the problem at the House level. Okay, thank you very much.
The state board citizens' open forum is closed at 11:24. We would like to thank all our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The state board will determine if any of these issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. A break. Can we take a... Well, we have, we're gonna modify the agenda when we come back, so let's take 10 minutes. Be back at 11:35. If I could call my board members back together, we're on a tight timeline, and we have Ken and Deena are returning as we speak, and we're going to now move forward with our agenda. We'll have a report from the KSDE staff led by Doug Boline regarding early childhood special education title services serving diverse student populations in Kansas. And this is one that's very important to the board. We've, thank you for being here, we're looking forward to this.
I hope we can answer your questions or what you were looking for. As you said, I'm Doug Boline, I'm an Assistant Director on the EXET team. I have my colleagues with me today, Tate Tadman, Michelle Hayes, Jamie Fisner, and Jana Roseborough, here to help out with this presentation, so let's get going. First thing, I just wanted to put a little blurb in about our team. We work with a lot of the subgroups with federal money. It's our intention that when people say that all students are gonna learn, we want to make sure they are talking about all students. We focus on those subgroups, and that's really who we're targeting in our programs. We use data to drill down and look at districts and look at kids. We provide technical assistance all the way from the district level down to the student level, depending on what districts need. And we're in charge of those federal funds, so wanted to give you just some of the figures. This comes off of our website, the KSDE website. This is the most current, I think, report card that's available. But if you look at the different subgroups, low SES is about 50%, if you count free and reduced lunches. Special education's about 13%, ELLs are 10. Probably, if we updated the numbers, there's probably more homeless kids now than there are migrant, than the Native Americans, and neglected and delinquent. So, if you take those figures and look at the programs that we administer, you can probably safely say that over 50% of the student population in Kansas is eligible for at least one of our programs. And one of the things we're trying to do is work across our programs, because we understand that kids can come from poverty, they could be migrant, they could be ELL, they could be all of these things at the same time. And so it's not just one subgroup, they bleed amongst them, and all are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. If we start with our programs, and this one's kind of unique, and I'll start with it, Title VII is the Indian Education Formula Grant, and it's unique in the fact that it doesn't really run through our department. Districts apply for these grants on their own, and so there is a minimum requirement of 10 Native American students in your district in order to apply for it. The minimum amount of money that's given out is $3,000, and in 2014, there was almost $900,000 was given out to 13 districts that applied for this grant. It works a lot like migrant that I talked to you about, the services that are provided. They're looking at tutoring, advocacy, counseling, making sure kids get to school, hooking them up with community services, math and reading enrichment, and summer school programs. So, a lot of the same focus that we do in the migrant program, they also do with the Native Americans. And like I said, since districts apply for these grants directly to the federal government, we don't have a lot of oversight on this one, so I don't have a lot of information on this. Special education was brought up as one of the things you'd like to talk about, but special ed is really, could be a whole session in itself, so just gonna kind of give you a few numbers, talk about a couple of highlights. Special ed is a little bit different also, and because it focuses on the individual student, whereas the rest of our federal monies are looking more programmatically. We're looking at a whole population of kids at once and trying to serve them, whereas special education through the IEP is looking at the individual student. Just some numbers, I didn't know what you might want to know, but this was from a month ago, I guess, these are the numbers when we were originally on the agenda, but a little over 60... And let's, like I said, since districts apply for these grants directly to the federal government, we don't have a lot of oversight on this one, so I don't have a lot of information on this. Special education was brought up as one of the things you'd like to talk about, but special ed is really, could be a whole session in itself, so just going to kind of give you a few numbers, talk about a couple of highlights. Special ed is a little bit different also, and because it focuses on the individual student, whereas the rest of our federal monies are looking more programmatically. We're looking at a whole population of kids at once and trying to serve them, whereas special education through the IEP is looking at the individual student. Just some numbers, I didn't know what you might want to know, but this was from a month ago, I guess, these are the numbers when we were originally on the agenda. But a little over 68,000 identified for special education. That first slide said that's about 13.7% of the student population, which is right in line with national average, I believe. Classified into 13 different exceptionalities, and then we've got about 13,000, almost 14,000 identified as gifted. Services are provided through 20 co-ops, 20 inter-locals, and 34 individual school districts to every student in Kansas, or everybody has special education students that they serve in some way. Placements vary depending on individual student needs, with the goal being that they are all educated in the general classroom.
I'm going to talk with you all about ESOL and Title III. I'm Michelle Hayes, and I'm the Title III and ESOL consultant. The things that I want to cover with you are how ESOL is done in the state of Kansas, federal regulations that we are responsible for, special education and ESOL overlapping, and technical assistance that we work to provide to our districts and schools. Within ESOL, you'll hear many acronyms that are used back and forth. ESOL is English for Speakers of Other Languages, ESL, English as a Second Language, ELL, English Language Learner, EL, English Learner, ELA, English Language Acquisition, which we don't really use in our state, LEP, Limited English Proficient, and then currently, CLD is Culturally and Linguistically Diverse, which is being more widely used. When a student is initially placed into an ESOL program, there are certain things that must take place. First is that all families, when they enroll their children, must complete a home language survey. If any language other than English is indicated on the home language survey, that flags the school to know that they need to administer a placement test for ESOL, and the placement test is given to the student. If the student has any language deficiencies in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, or writing in English, then they qualify for ESOL services. And then parent notification must take place within 30 days of the initial testing. Across Kansas, we have almost 55,000 identified ESOL students. The highest languages in Kansas are Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Arabic currently. Just to share some information with you on the number of ELLs that might be served in a district, Wichita is serving about 10,500, KCK approximately 8,000, Dodge City 30, approximately 3,800, Garden City approximately 3,600, Liberal approximately 3,100, Shawnee Mission also 3,100, Aletha 2,700, Emporia 1,600, and Topeka 1,500, and then it goes down from there. State ESOL is pre-K through 12th grade, so our four-year-olds through 12th grade. State funding is used to help schools and districts to implement programs, to pay for ESOL teachers and ESOL paras and supplemental materials that are needed to meet the needs of the students. And currently, funding is generated based on the amount of time that an ESOL endorsed teacher is working with identified ESOL students. A certified teacher, pre-K 12, can add an ESOL endorsement to their license through coursework and then taking the praxis or through praxis only. Each student that is identified as an English learner has an ILP, an Individual Learning Plan, which is much like an IEP in that it outlines a plan for the student and ensures that certain strategies are in place to meet the needs of the learner. There are several program models across Kansas in ways that we meet the needs of our learners, and I have them listed here. And depending upon staff and time, that decides what program model that the district chooses to use. But what we do know is that an English language learner is an all-learner first, and what we mean by that is they should be in core curriculum, receiving the same core instruction as any other student with adaptations made as necessary based upon their language acquisition. Districts that are implementing MTSS have had great success in ensuring that the English learners are a part of the system, they're not taught, or services are not done aside from the system, outside of the system, all students are served within the system. So that's the state side. On the federal side, federal side is Title III, and this includes immigrant. We have one district in our state each year that receives immigrant funds, and that's the district that has had the largest influx of immigrants. And so currently, Wichita is receiving that grant. Title III refers to our, the ELLs as LEP, Limited English Proficient. Funding is given per pupil to districts, so across the entire state, it's about $4 million divided up upon the districts that have Title III students. The money that they receive has to be used for supplemental services, and so these are services that would not otherwise take place without this funding. And the focus must be on language and professional development for the teachers in ensuring that they can best teach their students. And Title III ranges for ages 3 through 21. There is accountability tied in with Title III. We have, annually, we must test the language proficiency levels of the students, and so, and there are several AMAOs that the students must meet. So AMAO number one is that a certain percentage of students must make progress within the district, and currently that percentage is 36%. So 36% of the students in the district must move forward in their language proficiency. AMAO number two is looking at how many students score fluent, and so the goal is, currently is 27%, so 27% of the identified language learners must move forward into the fluent category. Something to know as you're looking at what our annual measurable achievement objectives are, it takes two years for a language learner to acquire social language, playground language, languages you hear them talking with their friends, talking at lunch, just two years. Academic language, the language that they need to understand the content going on in the classrooms, takes seven to 10 years to acquire. And then AMAO number three is reducing non-proficient, so that's working to close that gap within the subgroup. We do have students in our state that are identified as special education and ESOL. So we have a little over 4,000 students that are identified, and again, they're served within the system, so this does not mean that the student needs to have an IEP, and then they go and they, they're on this IEP track, and then another teacher comes and they go with that teacher and they work towards their ILP goals. Everything should be happening in collaboration and cohesively. If the student has an IEP, then the language acquisition of the student is portrayed within the IEP, and those services happen collaboratively, they don't have two separate plans. Many times, districts, and this is a lot of the technical assistance that we provide, struggle to identify if a student does have a disability when they are a language learner. We know and that language itself is not a disability, but that there are things that happen when a student is acquiring a new language that can cause teachers to think that there could possibly be a disability. For example, a silent period. Some students will not speak in the new language for up to nine months when they're going through that silent period, and so that causes red flags, people worried that the student could have a disability. And so things that we really work with teachers to look at is, you know, what is their language acquisition in their native language, the first language that they learned, what are they able to do in their native language, family interviews, looking at their rate of improvement, and just looking to see what they can demonstrate in their current native language. And another piece of that is that as they acquire the new language, language acquisition happens in the same part of the brain, and so if they already know something in their native language, then just hearing it in English by being in the general education classroom, the link, making that link takes a lot shorter amount of time. Technical assistance that we provide around meeting the needs of our English language learners, the great thing is, is that the strategies that are best for English language learners are actually best for all learners. And so the technical assistance that I work to provide, I work myself, you know, through TASM, providing technical assistance around not just what needs to be done, but how are you logistically going to figure out how to do this? Cross-team collaborations, working with districts to understand that they have to be cross-teaming, special education, general education, ESOL, and any other stakeholders must be working together to meet the needs of the students. And then cross-team within KSDE, much of the work that I oversee, I have to cross-team with the Career Standards and Assessments Team, making sure that the, what, what we are doing is aligning, and then also cross-teaming with Teacher License and Accreditation. We provide support to the field in helping teachers to achieve their ESOL endorsement through coursework, where they learn to, the strategies needed to meet the needs of the teach, of the students. School improvement and leading discussions around how school improvement practices and turnaround principles feed into meeting the needs of all learners, and so specifically how that's going to attend to their language learners. Again, back to Kansas MTSS, if they are implementing this system, then they're able to support the needs of their students within the system, and that alleviates a lot of extra stresses. And then just working to streamline documentation and plans along with working with fiscal and auditing and school improvement to make things cohesive for districts.
I have just enough time to say good morning before the clock strikes noon. So good morning to you. I am Jamie Fissner, and I will be talking with you today about Title I Part D. Title I Part D is the part of Title I that addresses the academic needs of the diverse learners known as the neglected and delinquent population. As you can imagine, these, this particular population of students has a lot of academic needs thrown on top of the list of needs they probably already come to the table with. The three main goals of the Title I Part D program are to help to address some of those academic needs. First and foremost, we want to improve the educational services for these students so that they can meet those academically challenging content that we have here in Kansas. Secondly, we want to provide them some transition services. When the students are leaving the facilities that they are in and going back to their schools, you can imagine some of the stigma that might be related there for them, and we want to help them smooth that transition out through a variety of different programs that the districts can offer to make that transition a little smoother. And we also want to help with the dropout problem that many of these youth face. They are behind academically, they're probably also behind credit-wise, and so this, the funds from this particular program can help to prevent some of the dropouts that may, that may occur. To receive funding for the supplemental services, to provide supplemental services to this population, districts with qualifying facilities in their districts, in their boundaries can apply directly to KSDE. Some of the qualifying facilities can be a juvenile detention center, juvenile correctional facility, private residential treatment facility, a group home type situation. So if you have one of those in your, in your district, you can apply directly to KSDE to receive some supplemental funding. To give you some demographic and performance data of our students that are in this program, we are looking at 2013, 14 specifically, since that's our most recent data. I do want to caution, however, that the data that I'm going to talk about are not, is not for the entire neglected and delinquent population of Kansas. We don't serve all of those students. We serve students where they live in the district that has applied for this funding. So specifically, these numbers relate to those districts that receive funding through Title I Part D, so I just want to make that clarification in numbers. In 2014, the Title I Part D program served approximately 4,700 students in 24 facilities, and that is spread out over 13 districts. The average age of these students is 16, although sadly, there are students down at the elementary level that do pop up in our demographic data. 78% of the population is male, and the percentage of students that are identified as special education is 33%, which is above the average in the state. You can imagine, obviously, they have some academic needs that either pause them to be in the neglected, delinquent situation or are a result of. The average length of the stay in the facilities, depending on the type of facility that it is, is roughly 65 days, but we do have some facilities that's a shortest seven, and we have others that's over 100. So it really depends on whether the students are there temporarily, why they wait adjudication, if it's a delinquent case, for example, or whether that is their permanent place that they're going to be while they finish out their sentence. So it really depends on the type of facility. In 2014, 15, our current school year, we are receiving approximately $2 million from USDOE to then give to the districts that have applied to receive that supplemental We all, we track as part of this program, one of the things that we do for the federal data is to, is to look at some of the outcomes, the educational outcomes, not just the demographic information. And when we look at some of the trend data, and we look at the 2013, 14 data compared to 12, 13, we are seeing that this program can have benefits. We have seen an increase in the number of youth that are able to earn high school credits, so some of that credit recovery piece, earning a GED and earning their high school diploma, so that those three goals, the districts are really working hard to make sure that the students are achieving academically. Common use of funds, there is a laundry list of acceptable use of funds, but some of the most common amongst the districts that we're working with is to provide personnel for tutoring after school. Again, depending on the type of facility that they're in, they may go to the actual local high school and attend regular, normal classes like we see every day. They come back and they might live in the group home, and at that point, the tutoring provides some credit recovery options, allowing them to maybe get back on track where they need to be academically. If they are in more of a detention facility where they're not allowed to go to the local school, then the core curriculum is provided through state funding that they may have through DOC or whatever, private funding, but then the supplemental funds that we provide allow for the tutoring aspect. Also, as you can imagine, in a given classroom, whether it's a local school or whether it's a facility, the vast academic needs in one room of our delinquent, neglected youth can be pretty vast. You could, you could have students on grade level, slightly below grade level, significantly below grade level, so the supplemental funding allows for them to provide the academic educational materials they would need to help these students get back on track. So that is neglected and delinquent in a nutshell, and there's my contact information, and I will turn it over.
Steve Roberts, if you have a question for Jamie?
Yes.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quickly, you referenced, I think it was 33%?
Yes.
And you said it's higher than the general population's percent of special education?
Correct.
Do you know what that other figure is?
13.7 in Kansas, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Tate?
Good afternoon, my name is Tate Taitman, I am on the EXSET team, and one of my roles is McKinney-Vento Homeless State Coordinator. It's called the EHCY, or Educating Homeless Children and Youth Act. One of the reasons that's important is that's where you'll find it when you're looking online for different information, and you should have received a packet with some of our information data that went around. The main purpose of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Acts is to provide school stability to those mobile kids that have lost housing, and here shortly, we'll talk about what the education definition of homeless is, but it's to keep these kids stable in their school of origin if it's in the best interest and if it's reasonable. So when we talk about reasonable, that comes down to a district and parents' decision, and then a lot of times, that's part of the technical assistance I provide to districts, what would be considered reasonable. Because reasonable in a metropolitan area such as Kansas City or Wichita is going to be different than Western Kansas because of safety issues, traveling, and also the issues of cars, dangerous intersections, you know, some of our highways are much more dangerous in the metropolitan areas. These students may enter without records, because a lot of times, because of the crisis and their mobility, they do not have the records available. That does not mean we're not going to get them. Our social workers, counselors, registrars, administrative staff are going to work really hard to get them so we can get these students properly placed in their classes. It also provides automatic free breakfast and lunch program for these students, and one of the big things is the removal of barriers to their educational access, such as fees. You know, to enroll, a lot of times, we have book fees, we have technology fees, those that fees need to be waived. Different districts choose differently how to do that. Some districts choose to waive it, some use other sources of income through other programs to pay for these. The next two pages, we're going to cover the definition of homeless students. The first thing is, it's the children who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So if they lack one of those three, they can qualify under one of these next eight definitions. And the first one is where we see 85% of our kids qualifying. A lot of times, it's commonly called couch surfing, especially for our teenagers, or doubled up. And that's when we have And that's when we have families or students sharing the housing of others. Could be relatives, friends, neighbors, and unfortunately, sometimes even strangers due to an economic hardship or similar reason. And when we talk about similar reason, we've got a couple examples up on the overhead. It's domestic violence, a lot of times, natural disasters, which we've unfortunately seen in Kansas fairly regularly. The best example is Greensburg. We went from no homeless students in that district over ninety-five percent of the students in that district being homeless. More recently, Baxter Springs, last spring, we had one to two homeless students, and when the tornado went through, we had eighty-five students that'd become homeless through that. Some of those have remained homeless this year as their families try to get back into their original housing. The second part of the definition is where we see the second most amount of students that are living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, and other areas due to lack of alternative housing. So, basically, that means they've been evicted, they've been kicked out, they don't have the credit to get into other places. Because that's where we see a lot of our families, if you don't have credit, you can end up at some of our hotels. And, you know, we're not talking about the hotels most of us would make that choice to stay in. Unfortunately, we have a lot of hotels that, you know, can rent for the month because p- parents don't have to have the credit, they get their utilities paid for, many times cable television, Wi-Fi access. So, a lot of times, our families kind of get stuck in those situations. We have a few living in emergency or transitional shelters. Luckily, we haven't had none that have been reported that have been abandoned, awaiting foster care placement. So, basically, these are the kids that have not been placed, they've just come into the system. We don't see a lot of these, but one of the big things with this, and I know one of the requests for, um, subgroups that was requested to us was foster care, and we don't oversee foster care, that's KDHE and DCF. And with the changes coming in July, DCF will be overseeing all that. And there's also a federal law called Fostering Connections Act, which is public law one ten, three thirty-five, and that gives similar protections to the kids in foster care. Typically, the next two are what we have stereotypically people think of as being homeless. Living in parks, different public places, possibly in their cars. Unfortunately, I do get phone calls from homeless liaisons and superintendents that deal with this. And then the last part of the definition talks about they can be migrant. And that just kind of goes back to what we've talked about throughout this presentation is all of these kids can qualify for more than one of these programs. So, we have homeless kids that are also migrant, we have homeless kids that are ELL, we have homeless kids that are in special education. And if you want more specific data, we do have that data provided on the fact sheets that were handed out to you. Okay, the next three slides are going over the data. And we start with two thousand five, two thousand six because that's when we first felt that our data was becoming really high quality. Because this law became effect, part of ESEA in two thousand two. Prior to that, it wasn't connected with education as much as it needed to be. So, with no child left behind, it got some more feet and substance to it. And as you can see, the trend is the amount of students being identified has grown. It's more than tripled in the last nine years. We also have three times as many school districts that are identifying students. So, we went from forty-five districts in five, six, which we had over three hundred districts at that time, to over a hundred fifty-five of our two hundred eighty-six districts last year that identified that. The two main reasons we see as we talk to districts are better training, their understanding what this program is and how students qualify, but also the recession. As you can go back, the biggest jump was from oh-eight, oh-nine to the nine-ten school year, which was one of the biggest parts of the recession during that time. And to give a little bit of comparison, looking at the national data, and we go back one more year because the national data's a year farther behind than what we have. We've seen growth from ten-eleven nationally of one, over one million to one point two million. And we like to remind people, these are kids that are in the K-12. This doesn't include our birth to five kids in these numbers. And most research shows the birth to five is approximately the same amount of kids that we have in K-12. So, when you look birth to eighteen, we're looking at about two and a half million kids right now. And that's why this program is so important, is we identify our students. And then the third set of data just compares the surrounding states. And if I'd also put up the population of the states, it pretty much falls in order of the population. Missouri's the largest, has the most homeless, Oklahoma and Colorado behind. And then Iowa and Kansas have approximately the same population. And this, again, we're looking at twelve thirteen data. And then Iowa is the smallest populated state in this area. For Nebraska, Nebraska would be seventh populated in this area. And one of the things I like to look at, our numbers is, you know, that first slide with data that Doug showed, it showed that two percent of our kids were homeless. Two percent, doesn't sound like a lot, but when you put that number that in twelve thirteen, that we had nine thousand three hundred thirty, when we think of those individual kids, that's a lot of kids in our state that are qualifying for this program because their families don't have their own homes. The funding, it comes from the federal level. Last year, or for the school year, we received four hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Some of that stays in-house at KSD so we can provide technical assistance to districts, so we can receive technical assistance from federal and a small part of my salary and my assistant's salary. The rest of it goes out to competitive grants. Currently, we have nine districts that receive those grants. These grants come available every three years, and there's a grant competition we put out on our website, and we allow, and we announce it through our KSD listservs. The second piece of funding that all districts have access to in Kansas are Title One homeless set-asides. There's a requirement that every district that receives Title One, which is every LA in Kansas, they have to set aside an amount. Right now, the federal government has suggestions of how to do that, but there's nothing mandatory of what they have to put. But in the state of Kansas, we require minimums of five hundred dollars if your district has less than a thousand students, and fifteen hundred dollars if you have a thousand or more. Many of our districts with larger homeless populations reserve more of their title funds for this. Um, here are some of the main ways the McKinney Grant Funds can be used by our districts. The outreach and identification of these students. We see a lot of it used for the transportation assistance because just in the Wichita metro and Kansas City metro areas last year, our local school district spent over a half million dollars just transporting homeless schools in just those two areas. And that's more money than we even get as a state. So, that provides the biggest barrier to districts as they are required to transport these students back to the school of origin, yet there's no direct funding for that for the majority of our districts. This helps some districts get school record transfers, immunizations. We can provide tutoring and other services. But also, in our larger districts, it can provide some support for our liaisons to give them more time for their jobs, to work with the other community resources. Because even though a lot of our districts would like their liaisons to serve more as a caseworker, they just don't have the time and capacity to do that. So, it's really important, there are people at the local level are really connect, really connected to their communities and what services are available. In some of our smaller districts, usually I'm one of the first resources they'll call, and I will refer them out to places I know in their parts of the state or different options they may have. The personnel I've talked a little bit about. This is required in the law of state coordinator, which is myself. Then each district that receives Title One funds, which again, is every district, is required to have a local liaison. And each district must appoint that person. They notify our team every year of who that person will be through our LCP process. And then at that point, I'm in contact with them through emails on our listservs. We offer webinars from the state, we also offer webinars from our Technical Assistance Center, which has a contract with the United States Department of Ed. And our Technical Assistance Center is based out of the North Carolina University at Greensboro. These are just some general resources. The first one is our membership organization, which provides professional development, policy development, also provides a national conference for state coordinators and local liaisons and service, service personnel to attend. We co-hosted with Missouri this past October with our national conference, which was held in Kansas City. The second resource here is the National Center for Homeless Education. That's an organization I just mentioned as our Technical Assistance Center. The National Network for Youth is a national runaway hotline. And then the final one is the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty, which provides resources to both schools and parents with regards to the McKinney-Vento homeless projects and programs that are through. That's a really quick summary of all these programs. Here are Doug's, Michelle's, Jamie's, and my contact information, and we can take any questions.
Tate, we have a couple of questions, Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. I guess I don't quite understand the definition of diverse. Um, because in, on the slide three, I didn't see, uh, African-American children nor Hispanic chil- children listed. Uh, the Native American children are listed, so help me understand.
I think we were under the impression that, that, uh, we were talking about the federal programs that we had minister. Um, if we want to talk race and ethnicity, then we're probably looking at our Title One funds that are going to support them, um, Kansas City, Wichita. I mean, migrant deals, Hispanic is a large population of the migrant program. Um, ELLs, a lot of them are Hispanics. I mean, it was, we were under the impression we were talking about the federal programs we administer.
Okay, I under- now, I understand because I knew the definition of diverse would include us. And, and I didn't see it, so that was my concern. Also, uh, another, when I was on the local board, I really became aware of, and I would like to know, and not urgent, the thirteen districts, uh, the Indian education, um, program, grant programs.
Sure, have them right here.
Okay, where's?
I wrote them down.
Oh. I was gonna say, I didn't see it.
They're not on your slide. Uh, Wichita?
Oh, okay.
Or you just want me to give them to?
I just won't take any more time because, uh, it's lunchtime.
Uh, Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tate or Doug, e- either one, uh, two quick questions. Uh, and I'll ask them both at the outset here to save time. One, could you characterize the relationship between faith-based organizations? Are they a welcome participant in collaborative nature? And the other one is, do, do I have the numbers understood correctly? If it's four hundred and eighty-some thousand divided by nine thousand, it's roughly fifty-five dollars per kid?
I'll answer your second question, unfortunately, yes, that's very correct, and that's one of the issues we see, and we've, our national organization works with appropriations committee, and I was actually part of that last week where we're at. We've asked for more money through the appropriations because fifty-five dollars per kid just doesn't do much, and that's one of the reasons it only serves the nine school districts. And then on the faith-based with the homeless groups, um, I sit on a lot of different aid organizations with other agencies and some of the faith-based, um, you know, a couple interfaith and Catholic charities are some of the ones. Um, we all sit at the same table because a lot of times, it's those groups in some of our communities that are our best resources. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of what they provide is the housing sometimes. They're also involved with the backpack programs and communities, so it's very active. Another one that I'm, you know, it's one of these, just having to work with those programs unfortunate, but I also sit on an anti-trafficking task force, and faith-based is very much involved with that. It's through the Assistant Attorney General's Office and the new faith-based part of DCF that's out there.
Kathy Bush?
I think a lot of the community resources that our programs rely on are faith-based. I know in Garden City, a lot of the, um, resources that are available to the migrant kids out there are through the, the Methodist Church out there, and, and I think Dodge City is the same way, so.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of questions, one real quick, and the other one may need other time, some other time. Under ESOL, you talked under the federal regulations for the testing, and, you know, it takes two years for the kids to get a, kind of a playground language within seven to ten for an academic language. And you talked about fluency, so how, are you still identifying fluency through the KELPA test? And is that in the process of being redesigned?
It is, yes, um, currently, yes, we are working through, um, the KELPA, the Kansas English Language Proficiency Assessment. And then we will be transitioning into a newer version of the assessment, um, that matches the new, um, ESOL standards, which also align to the college and career readiness standards.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, and then in special ed, and I don't know, maybe some, I think, Doug, you may have said it would require a whole session, which I think it could. Um, just, because I really would probably like some additional information. Um, you know, I've heard that the federal government's really pushing to get folks to, uh, decrease the number of, the percentage of students in, um, a more restrictive environment, uh, in districts. And, uh, you know, I just would like some additional information on some of that, and I don't know if anybody else does or if that's just me. So, uh, I'd like some more information on that, I'm just curious about, um, where we are. Because I, I mean, I certainly, mainstreaming is a good thing, but there are also students who need some selected services.
Get the chance to get up here, um, yes, thank you. And we can absolutely provide you with some additional information on it. Last year, we did do a targeted, uh, poll and look across the state in, in regards to both Indicator thirteen within special education, which is the transition sixteen and above, um, looking at, um, those regulatory requirements, and also within our IDA file review and, and the gifted file review. But mostly in some of the most restrictive settings, those, uh, yeah, either it be a specialty school or just, you know, uh, more segregated settings, mostly students with disabilities are placed there. To do a deeper drill down there and, um, and really look at the education that was, is being provided to those students in those locations. Um, speaking from the national perspective, I, I think what is going forth and what we've done through, as Michelle kind of alluded to in hers, is really working within the MTSS to make those connections when it all appropriate to have those students with even the most significant disabilities receive, um, instruction in the general education cla- um, classroom within that, that framework structure. But we can absolutely provide you some additional information because as Doug said, yes, it probably could be a whole other, a whole other, um, topic and subject.
Multiple days, probably.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ken Willard, and this will be our last question?
It'll be short, but my question had to do with what Kathy just asked as well about the ESOL students, uh, taking seven to ten years. Do students ever become, does an ESOL student ever become not an ESOL student?
Great question. Um, yes, they do. Um, some students can take, you know, every student is different, so some students can take a smaller amount of time, some students can take a longer amount of time. There are many factors that, um, attribute to how a student acquires the language. Um, and a lot of it goes back to, um, the general education classroom. And the reason for that is if a student is engaged in instruction in the classroom, in English, um, in a, in an environment that is pushing their writing forward and providing them the supports and pushing collaboration and allowing them to talk with other students and to talk with the teacher, their language will grow a lot faster than if they're in a classroom where it is a, um, sit and get, where they're just listening, um, to the teacher. So, um, there are specific strategies that have to be in place to move the language forward. And so, when I said, when I alluded to that the strategies that are best for all learners, or for language learners are best for all learners, that's what, that's what I'm referring to. Um, in the state of Kansas, um, students have to pass the, um, Kansas English Language Proficiency Assessment, um, at the fluent level two consecutive years to be exited, um, from ESOL services. And we do have students that are exited, and once a student is as exited, we identify a way to, um, the district identifies a way to monitor the students to ensure that the, um, that the language stays where it needs, um, to be. Um, also, if a student's language is not challenged and moved forward because, um, we, we support them speaking the native language at home. Um, when families come in and they say, oh, well, you know, the aunt speaks English, so we're going to try to just start speaking English at home only. Well, that's the worst thing that can happen because if the student can learn it in their native language, which is their first language that they ever learned, then they can easily transfer that, um, into English, and it happens more quickly. And so as far as the exit criteria goes, though, we monitor them for two years, and then they are, they are fully exited, and they are no longer identified as a limited English proficient student.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry, but I need one more question, having to do with the I L P. Does the I L P focus on fidelity or intensity of their preparation? Or does it, is it just for language acquisition, or does the I L P include everything else?
Good question. The Individual Learning Plan actually focuses on, is all encompassing. There are E S O L standards, and the E S O L standards are standards that the student needs to have in place in order to be able to access the standards of the content areas, the math, the E L A, the science of social studies, and so on. Those standards lay out specifically what you can expect a student to be able to do at each proficiency level. So the general education teacher, the E S O L specialist work collaboratively to write goals with specific strategies. So an example of this could be that if you're working to move the student's oral language and written language forward a proficiency level, because it is expected that a student could, could move forward one proficiency level a year at a maximum. So when they write a goal together, they look at what could be expected at the current proficiency level, and what is needed to get them to the next proficiency level, and they put strategies in place that every content area teacher does, either only with that student, or they could be doing it with all students, because it's best practice to move the language forward. And that would be all encompassing across all content areas. So if they're at the high school level, it's all stakeholders.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much to the team. Very informative, great questions. We're going to recess for lunch until one-thirty. The Policy Committee is going to meet in room six hundred. Jenna, is that correct? So we're recessed until one-thirty. Thank you very much. At that time, Brad will do his E S A update and Commissioner's report.